We've called this meeting to order. We now have our invocation by Chipper Smith.
Let us pray. God, we thank you for this day that we've never seen before. We thank you for this meeting where we can do the business of the city of Florence, a place that we love and cherish. Please bless our city, our state, and our nation. God, please move any divisiveness that we may all come together to the betterment of our city and to our citizens. Please look into our hearts and look into our minds that we make decisions that are pleasing to you and to you only. In your name I do pray, amen.
Now, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, council. I want to stop and pause. We have a new member to join us, Mr. Zach McKay. And we welcome you to the team, councilman.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Happy to be here.
Thank you so much. Our approval of minutes?
Take the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposes, the ayes have it. Now, we will have honors and recognition. Oh, I'm sorry, council. With your permission, can I move the resolutions B, D, and E up right after appearances before court? The council, yeah, I think we're in court. Okay, no objections. Thank you so much. All right, now we will have honors and recognition. Nisha Johnson, 20 years utility finance.
Thank you so much. I am excited to be here today to present Nisha with her 20 years service recognition. Nisha began her career with the city of Florence in April of 2005 as a customer service representative of Florence, where she was responsible for processing payments, handling payment inquiries, and setting up new services. On November 20th, set up 26 handicaps related to customer service or feminine authority, expanding her duties some place working with meter readings, verifying rate rates for accuracy and processing many utility type applications, identifying 90-day billing for a town, and managing the monthly billing process. In November 2020, Nisha was promoted to customer service representative 10 U. While she continues to perform for customer service representative three responsibilities, she now leverages her extensive experience in utility finance operations and customer service to handle bill for me, monitor daily connectivity, and oversee productivity. Nisha provides a dependable presence in the utility finance office, and her years of service reflect great life from loyalty to the setting. We sincerely appreciate your dedication and commitment to serving Florence City. Congratulations.
And now. Y'all just stay here. Now, we will have Shannon McKenzie, which is 15 years of police in the police department.
Come on up, sir.
Yes, sir.
Let's see it.
We are recognizing Shannon, 15 years of service with the city of Florence Police Department. Corporal Shannon McKenzie began his career with the city of Florence Police Department on April 12th of 2010. After completion of the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, he was assigned to the U. F. Law Patrol Bureau. Shannon spent the next three years on patrol, answering calls at the service, protecting and serving the citizens of Florence while honing his creative policing skills. In 2013, Shannon transferred to the Special Investigation Unit, taking on the role of a narcotics agent. Since that time, he has diligently investigated the force drug, prostitution, gambling, and other vice-related crimes. In November of 2013, Shannon became a dog handler in Special Investigations Unit. His first canine partner was named Vector, and they worked in tandem together for the next six years until Panther was retired in 2019. In no foul, also in 2019, Shannon was promoted to the Reich of Court and remained with the Special Investigations Unit. And then in November of 2020, Shannon welcomed his second canine partner, Magdol. And in addition to all those responsibilities within the Special Investigations Unit, in 2021, Shannon became a certified hostage crisis negotiator. And has been instrumental in diffusing multiple crisis situations. In August of 2023, Shannon became a member of the final crime task force consisting of the Florence County Sheriff's Office, then the Florence Police Department. Shannon, along with members of this past force, who made positive impact on our community by removing significant amounts of illegal drugs and weapons from our streets, as well as capturing human drug offenders and violent criminals. Last year, members of this past board received natural recognition in California for the number of illegal weapons that they removed from the streets. Corporal Shannon McKenzie is a conscientious, dedicated, and extremely valued member of Florence Police Department. We congratulate you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have appearances before council. Ms. Susan Brown to address a handicap ramp for Barnes Street Activity Center.
I got my stopwatch on for five minutes.
Yeah.
Thanks for hearing my plea for a handicap ramp in front of the doors of the entrance of the Barnes Street Center. I know the building meets ADA requirements, but the existing ramp is located a distance from the door. And so people, some of the seniors have walkers and canes, and they can't have to go that distance and come back to the entrance. Is the curb blocks the direct path, and it is incredibly difficult and even unsafe. I've been discussing this issue with city officials since at least March of 2022, but maybe even longer. For a while, I was told it's going to be looked into, and I was told it was going to happen. But then, at the end of 2024, I was told, no, it's not happening. That was hard to hear. On behalf of my sister Kathy and so many others who utilize the Barnes Center, I want to thank you for what you already do to improve the community's quality of life. The Barnes Street Center is the home of the OWLS program, older, wiser, livelier seniors. And I would like to emphasize older and livelier. While the citizens in this group are livelier, they are older or getting older, and some of them do rely on walkers and canes to get around. So if you're an OWLS member, please stand. I got a couple friends. All right. Unfortunately, the accessibility issues still exist at the center, and they need to be addressed. I'd like to share my sister's story with you and illustrate why. Before Alzheimer's disease severely impacted her mobility, she was incredibly active. She exercised regularly. She took a variety of exercise classes, specifically Tai Chi and chair yoga at the Barnes Street Center. Unfortunately, her physical and cognitive health has declined, and the only class she can participate in is the chair yoga class at the Barnes Street Center. Her mobility has decreased to the point she must use a walker, but she's fallen 30-something times over the past few years. We know the city wants to provide a safe and welcoming space for all its residents, but when a facility presents barriers to accessibility, like a curb directly in front of the main entrance, it becomes more than just an inconvenience, it becomes a risk. While I'm not here to talk about the legal concerns, I do believe addressing this now is simply the responsible thing to do for the safety of those who use the center and for the city of Florence itself. In order to assist Kathy and others with severe mobility issues, I strongly urge you to construct a ramp that extends directly from the front door of the center to the handicap parking spaces. By doing so, you will not only be making the building more accessible, you're showing that our seniors' safety and dignity matter. And, okay, will the others, I don't know if Zilf stood, will the others in the audience who came to support this, please stand? Did you stand? Okay. I can't see through the pole. All right. So Florence City Council, I know that you want to do the best for all people. Thank you for listening and taking the time to truly consider what this means to families like mine. All right, now, I still got time. Jay Lawrence was one of my kids. I was the school counselor at Lester Elementary, so we've known each other long, long, anyway. And when I spoke to some people about this, which, we are a real friendly group, the OWLS program, but they said like, they have to hold the door open for Kathy, like when I'm going to get the car or something, and so we really want handicap doors and all too, you know, to make it accessible, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brown. We have a question.
Okay.
And just for clarification, initially, I was thinking about the Pearlmore Center. This is the Barnes Street Activity Center. So I pulled up a picture just now. I'm not, so I know there's a, not a ramp, but is this considered a ramp here? I wish I could put it up here, but you're saying you want one in front of the entrance?
The entrance doors, yes. There's a ramp halfway down the building.
Okay.
But some people, it's too far to walk there and walk back and get into class and do class, you know? And you know what? We're going to be there one day.
Okay.
Okay?
Councilman Smith.
I think it's a question for city manager. Are we in compliance as far as like any state laws or?
We are.
We are? So my question, Ms. Brown, would be, your request again is just to have it placed in a different location, the ramp?
To make it easier for people to get in. And I have a copy of this in front of everybody. I had it turned down, okay? But it, yes, I know it reads ADA, but it's still not accessible for everybody. And it's not safe to go up a curb when you have mobility problems.
Um, councilman, what should we?
Right.
Well. Well, I'll defer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I knew this was all the agenda, so I went over there and looked, and I will say, she does have a point, that wraparound. I couldn't fit my, I mean, it's no secret here, in a wheelchair, mine could not fit on that, from where you go to the ramp, and then come around the building to the front. My wheelchair is too wide, would not fit. So I do agree with her. It is a very tight spot, and then to go, to get where it is from the handicap, or you also have to go into traffic, which could be, again, a legal issue for the city down the crake. I do think it's at least worth looking into out of that of all.
Okay, I think you're going to.
Well, I mean, I just want to say this. It's just, it's no surprise that a situation to me, you know, comes up initially, because we, as council, haven't been in a position to represent everyone from a position of understanding as we can today. And so I think what Councilman McKay has to say is much more important than anything that I could add.
Okay, council.
Would it be, what I would recommend, Mr. City Manager, is if this matter were to be consulted, if you consult with Councilman McKay, and just let's let him give his thoughts on what could be done, and then maybe that's something y'all can put back to us on that later time.
Sure.
Thank you.
And one thing I can say, it is, thank you for bringing this to our attention, because if I can be honest, I'm looking at this, and I was going to ask him to put this up here for you to tell us what you were saying, because even with my eyes, I'm looking at it, I can't see it and don't understand it.
A friend recommended me to take pictures, but I didn't have time.
But it helped with someone going out there to see, because I'm not seeing it. So thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we will move to the resolutions, council, if you don't mind. We will move to B, D, and E. First on the agenda is Resolution Number 2025-11. This is a resolution to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Florence.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry?
Thank you, mayor. I'll proceed to read the resolution. Resolution to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and right for all Americans. And whereas. National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that the issue of fair housing continues to be a problem for many families of all races, and that complete success can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. And whereas. The city of Florence and its commitment to fair housing proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and urge all of our citizens to join in this effort to reaffirm our individual commitment to support the practice and the spirit of the fair housing law. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Florence and the state of South Carolina does hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month, resolved this 14th day of April 2025. And we do have members from the PD Realtors Association to accept the award or the proclamation.
Yes.
I see.
Congratulations, we talk to you soon. I would just like everyone to know that evil consent is father's next, the Senate counties is needed, and we teach and preach for housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next, we have Resolution 2025-13. The resolution to recognize for the Florence 10U All-Star Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Athletic Program Championship. Are they out there?
He's getting it.
He's getting it?
Yes. About an hour or two ago. About an hour and a half ago. They jumped it. Say we have 12:30.
Yay, come on in. Come on in. Come on up, come on up. Yeah, but I was so fast at that, we did not get a motion.
Read the only thing, resolution number.
I did that.
Some move.
Well, she's got to read, you're going to read it.
Yes, ma'am.
She's going to read it. Come back up against this right here, okay? Great.
All right.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
All right. Resolution Number 2025-13, a resolution of recognition for the Florence 10U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Athletic Programs Championship. Whereas the city of Florence 10U All-Star Boys Basketball Team competed in the state tournament, winning the South Carolina Athletic Programs Crown. And whereas the team's journey to success began with their victory at the district tournament held in Florence, showcasing their commitment to excellence and teamwork. And whereas, following their district triumph, the team advanced to the SCAP State Tournament held at the Buton Wells Recreation Center in Beaufort, South Carolina, where they displayed remarkable determination and competitive spirit. And whereas, led by coaches James Eason, Robert Dempsey IV, and Anthony Waters, the 10U All-Star Boys delivered impressive performances defeating North Charleston and East Columbia on March 8th, 2025, to secure a place in the championship game. And whereas, in a decisive rematch against East Columbia on March 9th, 2025, the Florence Boys rose to the occasion to claim a 43-17 victory and secure the SCAP State Championship title. And whereas, through hard work, dedication, and perseverance, these athletes have proven themselves state champions and are role models for our area. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Florence, the city council of the city of Florence, South Carolina commends this athletic accomplishment and congratulates the 10U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for their remarkable achievement in winning the South Carolina Athletic Programs Championship.
Congratulate y'all, come? Congratulations.
Come on.
Right here, and I'm standing right here, because Coach McCall is the one that's presenting this, and so.
Well, I'm not embarrassed, but I will.
No. All right, there. Gee, gee. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Somebody make like a steak up.
I'm not really much of a talker, so I just want to say, just thank you for giving me the opportunity to coach you guys. Y'all did heck of a job. And just also that, even though all this is over, continue to chase your dreams and don't let anyone stop what you're trying to do. Okay? That's pretty much it. And I want to say thank you to all the parents that worked for y'all. We wouldn't have these kids that we have out there today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Great job.
Great job. Keep up the good work. I think now, now we have, I'll let them clear out. They've been here for a while, so they're kind of wired up. Resolution Number 2025-14, this is a resolution to recognize for the Florence 17U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Athletic Program Championship.
Some move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
That's a lot of hardware.
I'm shaking, I love it. Now, you got to go down.
All right, Resolution Number 2025-14, a resolution of recognition for the Florence 17U All-Star Boys Basketball Team for winning the South Carolina Athletic Programs Championship. Whereas the city of Florence 17U All-Star Boys Basketball Team competed in the state tournament, winning the South Carolina Athletic Programs Crown. And whereas, the team's journey to success began with their victory at the district tournament held in Florence, showcasing their commitment to excellence and teamwork. And whereas, following their district triumph, the team advanced to the SCAP State Tournament held at the Buck Walter Recreation Center in Bluffton, South Carolina, where they displayed remarkable determination and competitive spirit. And whereas, led by coaches Henry Bird, Renato Cannon, and Sean Wiles, the 17U All-Star Boys delivered impressive performances defeating Pickens and Seneca on the, on March 8th, 2025, to secure a place in the championship game. And whereas, in the championship game on March 9th, 2025, the Florence Boys rose to the occasion to claim.
We are so proud of you. This teaches you that you are winners and can win at life. Tom, you in shot?
Just like Glasgow said, I'm not much on words, even though I was in the military and we haven't been in the spotlight, but now, you know, when you get to that family life, you kind of shy back from a lot of things, but I'm very proud of these guys and the coaches that was with me. This is my first experience with this, but I've been coaching all my life with young kids and everything, but these guys here, even though they older, at times we had to get on them, you know, about discipline and things like that, but you know, that's with every young kid, you know what I'm saying? You know, but once they lock in into what we was buying and giving them, that's when they rose to the occasion and everything, and everything. And like I said, I couldn't be so more proud of my coaching staff and these kids on the accomplishment that they achieved. The only thing I can say to them is that I hope they take that same success into everyday life and what they do for us here and now, and everything.
Thank you all so much. Coaches, thank you for all that you've done. Anybody?
I would say, I want to thank the players for uncommendable achievement, that's real good stuff. I would say, I would want to thank the coaches, but Renato Cannon and all that soft, excuse that, all that San Francisco 49 again. But again, thank you all for what you're doing. You're being role models to these kids and grooming them and motivating them to be better community members. So thank you all for what you did. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Council, next. Next on the agenda is ordinance and position. Bill Number 2025-08 is the second reading, an ordinance to adopt the updated downtown design standard for the city of Florence. Question. There's a question.
No, wait.
So, so, second, there's a second, so now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, Jerry, quick question, and I've been looking on and through the downtown design standards. Are there any way or any place within these standards that require the renter or owner to have or use a commercial contractor?
Within the design guidelines? I don't think so. I don't recall that in the guidelines specifically. You know, I'd have to perform a search to say for certain, but I do not recall the design guidelines requiring the use of a, of a commercial contractor.
Clint, did you want to say that?
Yeah, that'll be, so any requirements for a commercial contractor will be under the International Building Code. So any, any of our building codes, uh, certain work, I think it's specifically work being performed in excess of five thousand dollars on a commercial building has to be performed by a commercial contractor, a licensed commercial contractor.
Okay, and, and the thing-
But that's, that's completely separate from the design guidelines.
Yeah, because, um, I've had some people tell me that they were told that they had to use a commercial contractor when having some work done in the downtown area. And I was kinda confused about that because when I looked up in the state of South Carolina, there's no such thing as a commercial contractor. Uh, they use the general GC to be able to work on commercial and residential buildings, but a specific commercial contractor, it does not exist in the state of South Carolina. So I'm kinda worried about that because that kinda gives people an idea that they have to use a certain type of contractor when it doesn't exist.
That would be throughout the city, so when, uh, when they're coming in to pull building permits, it would, that would be, um, even outside of the downtown or within the downtown. Again, it depends on what type of work that they're doing and to what level they're doing. Would dictate what type of licensing the contractor would have to have.
Because again, in the state of South Carolina, there's no such license as a commercial license. It's only general contractors. So I want us to kind of be mindful because a lot of these folks don't understand what they have to do when they go down there. And when they hear commercial contractor, it sounds like a lot. And it sounds like something that could be more than what a general contractor could do, which is what's listed in the state of South Carolina.
I, the chair, um, Chair Recognize, Counsel, debate.
Clint, Jerry, that had, while it's a, uh, a significant question that a councilwoman has asked, does it have anything to do with the design, uh, downtown design guidelines that are currently in front of us?
That's why I had to ask, was there anything in there requesting that? That's why I started off with that, yeah.
Okay, so, so moving forward with this, that's a separate question. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yeah, separate, but I want us to make it clear and understandable for everybody.
Councilman called.
I got you. So, uh, one thing I would say, after reviewing, reviewing the, uh, the many meetings from last meeting, um, I think it was a, there was a discussion pertaining to the noise ordinance. All the, now this is here, this ordinance is to amend, um, is to amend a section of the UDO. So what I wanna do is, I wanna make a motion to defer, um, so we can take a look at, um, we are amending the UDO, but I wanna take a further look at, um-
Have the changes.
Some, I want to take a further look at some things pertaining to, pertaining to that, pertaining to amending the UDO. So I make a motion to defer.
Second it. Okay, discussion, okay.
Yes, um, the noise ordinance is a separate, or, am I correct that the noise ordinance is a separate ordinance, just like the International Building Code is a separate, something separate in our code system?
The, the noise ordinance is a section of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Right.
Not, not the design guidelines.
And this is just approval of the design guidelines?
That's correct.
Which has nothing to do with the noise ordinance? And so if we wanted as a council to address the noise ordinance, we certainly can do that. But that has nothing to do with the design guidelines that are currently before us, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, so I, I don't understand why, when one has nothing to do with the other, and if we wanna look at the noise ordinance, I'm more than happy to look at it, if that's what we wanna do.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we get, um, go, can we go into legal, into executive session with this to get legal, legal advice on, on this? Would that be okay with you all?
I'll move that we go into executive session.
Oh, no objection.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, would it be to receive information related to procedurally what you'd need to do?
Um, um, because we're asking what goes in, what doesn't, um, can we get that in executive session or we can't?
Procedurally, yeah.
Procedurally, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's-
Yes.
Okay.
So would you wanna defer any action against at this point in the meeting?
Yeah, we, we would discuss it there.
And then come back out.
Yes.
Okay, I do, and I need a vote on that?
Yeah, I would defer it.
Yeah. Do I need to get a vote on it going into executive session?
If you wanna go into executive session now?
No, no, not now. Now, no, no, I do not wanna go now. We wanna finish this. Okay, so we will move this to executive session, okay.
Do you wanna just defer this on the agenda to later?
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah.
That's what I wanna do. We will move this. All right, next we will have bill number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, second reading. It's an ordinance to rezone from NC fifteen to NC six point one. The property located at Dexter Drive and Atwood Avenue identified as Florence County Tax Map Number zero zero one five zero dash zero one dash one four zero.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor? Um, any opposes? The ayes have it. Next we have on our agenda, bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. It is the second reading. An ordinance to amend the budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, and ending June third, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. What say you?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposes? The ayes have it. Next we have on our agenda, introduction of ordinance. Bill number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, this is the first reading. An ordinance to amend the Unified Development Ordinance regarding setbacks for community communication towers.
Since we, um, Madam Mayor, since we deferring that, could we go ahead and defer this as well, cause it falls under that UDO?
Yeah, is that, that's-
I mean, we're gonna amend the UDO at the same time, let's do it all at the same time, right?
If, has this been moved in second?
Um, we, we, we moved in second, Jerry came up.
No, not this one. Is there a motion, I mean-
So moved.
In second.
Second, okay, now.
If, if, I, I, I have floor. Responding, I, I, anything that relates to the UDO is, there are many separate entities, and, and if you want to, uh, Jerry, briefly give us what these elements are and, and how we have, over the years, treated them separately and handled them separately, and the separate ordinances for each and every one, as opposed to considering it all in one lump sum.
That's not germane to-
Well, I think that's, that's the question that was asked.
I go to the chair, point of order.
Okay, so can, can we, we do, can we do, what is your point of order?
That his statements are not germane to this bill. It's pertaining to the history of, we're not, there's a motion to defer. It's a first and a second. It's a, excuse me, I have floor, it's a first and a second to adopt this. You're talking about defer, no one made a motion to defer.
No, no, I think Lashandra made a motion to go to-
Executive session and talk about all this while we're gonna talk about it.
And he-
I don't think I want to second her motion to go into that.
Okay, we can go to executive session on this one, too.
No objections.
No objections, any objections? Okay, so we will move this to executive session. Okay, next we will move to bill number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, it's the first reading. An ordinance to amend the Somerset Acre Planned Development on Jefferson Street, uh, Jefferson Drive, I'm sorry. Second it. All those in favor? Jerry?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is an older planned development district that was adopted in the early two thousands. Um, it comprises, um, property located along Jefferson Drive, between Jefferson Drive and Palmetto Street. And, uh, the planned development within it, and I can go to the old, um, this is the old planned development that was adopted, had various zoning districts in it, ranging from, um, single-family residential to, uh, multifamily, uh, to commercial allotments. And all of these are based on the old nineteen ninety-nine, uh, consolidated zoning ordinance. Because, because it's a PDD and it referenced that document, it kinda takes a snapshot in time. And so whenever amendments or, or development occurs in this planned development district, um, we compare the development against the old consolidated zoning ordinance. And, uh, there's a portion, I'm gonna back up to the map here. There's a portion, this, this, this area in red, uh, is all designated as, uh, commercial property or B three designation. However, uh, the owner of the property wants to develop it with more apartments or more multifamily buildings, um, just like what you see there above it. Um, basically just a, kind of a mirror of, of one of those rows of apartments. And within that old B three designation, it does not allow the density. Um, it only allows a density, uh, I believe to six and a half units, um, per acre. Um, whereas they want to construct, um, the, uh, apartments to be at fourteen and a half units per acre. And so what they're proposing is to, um, change this to the R five designation within the planned development, which would allow them to move forward with this development. And on this image, you can see in red here, um, they just, that, that's what they want to construct in that segment of that property. Um, it's, it's very much in agreement, um, with what is adjacent to it. It leaves the portion along Casewa there, uh, zoned commercial in this instance. And, um, it is surrounded by, um, either the, the school, Dale May, to the, um, I guess to the east, um, and other apartment buildings around it and commercial property. And Planning Commission did unanimously, uh, vote to approve this six to zero. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you. What say you?
Some move.
All those there would have-
All those in favor? Opposes? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is bill number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. This is an ordinance to annex and zone NC six point two to property located at ten oh six West Marion Street, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number nine zero zero six zero dash one three dash zero zero five. What say you?
Some move.
All, oh, no. Jerry?
Uh, yes, this property is located along Marion Street. It is contiguous with city limits. Um, here's a closer version of it. It's, it's very close to some of the city's neighborhood redevelopment, as well as, um, very close to some of the Habitat for Humanity development that has been occurring in this area. The, um, property is proposed to be zoned NC six point two, which is in agreement with surrounding properties, uh, as well as, um, the future land use for the property. And here's a site photo, um, the property, as you can see, is a burned property. Um, upon annexation, they would like to take advantage of our demo program as well, which is in agreement with our neighborhood revitalization strategy. And Planning Commission did unanimously, uh, vote to recommend this zoning designation. And this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposes? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is introduction of resolutions. We have resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten. A resolution to designate, um, additional public spaces within the City of Florence in the possession, sale, service, consumption, and distribution of beer and wine at special events may be permitted.
So moved.
Second it. Victoria?
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, this resolution will allow approved groups and organizations to, uh, sell and distribute alcohol at our Timrod Park pickleball courts and spectator areas, as well as the tennis courts and spectator areas, as well as our amphitheater and the lawn. We will require individuals to submit, uh, a park use permit, and it'll be upon approval of our department. And we will require them to utilize the officers in blue in regards to having this special event or any special events there.
Um, Councilwoman Lee Smith?
Um, Ms. Victoria, does this include only just those specific areas named or throughout all the areas in which people? So we just limiting to-
That's correct, just the specific areas that's listed in the resolution.
Is there a reason why?
Yes, uh, we do not want to allow individuals to have alcohol for, say, at the playground or, um, any of the other open areas at the park. So we wanna designate certain locations for special events or tournaments that may go down or happen at the, uh, Timrod Park area.
Okay. But this will only be at the pickleball area?
Pickleball, tennis, spectator areas, the amphitheater, and the lawn within Timrod Park, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
You got a question? Okay, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I do have a, a quick question. Is there any other, I like, uh, parks that this is allowed at other than this here so far?
Yes.
Where at?
So currently we have the Lot and Chase House and the lawn, we have the soccer complex, as well as the Carolina Bank Field.
So, so the question is, if there was, cause I was reading this too, if there was like another, I guess, uh, park that has similar, I guess, uses to like this pickleball, pickleball, um, courts or spectator areas, do you have to always come back to council for a-
Resolution.
Resolution, I guess. Cause I was thinking that maybe something the city manager can just do, but I guess you, we wanna kinda keep here. Well, that's fine, that was my question, I just had that one quick question.
Councilman Brad.
Two questions. One, those other, um, places that you referenced, do any of those have, like, children areas, playgrounds, and things like that?
No, so no playgrounds at the Lot and Chase House, North Soccer, North Carolina Bank Field.
And, uh, other question is, um, like what range, is it beer and wine, is it, what, what's the range?
It's beer and wine, it's beer and wine. Yes.
Could it be, um, I mean, my only concern is this, it changes the nature of the park in, in terms of if you have children and different things there, plus that, that park, um, truth be told, has other elements, you know, um, folks there that, that, um, may not need that, that opportunity, you know, and, and could be disruptive. You know, that may not be there just to watch pickleball, you know, but may be there for other reasons, so, uh, I, I just, I just think that we're, we potentially may be opening up Pandora's Box.
And that's why we were required, the officers in blue, to be present at the special events.
Because we, we feel like we will have issues.
Just for precautionary, I mean, not saying that we will or we won't, but just to be on the safe side, that's it, both ways.
Yeah, I, I, I have reservations on that at this time.
And that instance, who is paying for the officer to be on site?
The organization.
Smith?
Okay, inside of our, our permit, what is our, and I guess this may be, um, an attorney question, what is our restriction as far as alcohol consumption? As far, you know, because we're having this at parks and there are, there are gonna be children at those type of events. What is our restriction as far as alcohol consumption?
Talking about, with respect to-
In perspective of, um, I know at some, at some places that cell permits, is it, somebody can buy with two alcoholic drinks per person at a time, as far as that?
So there's no limit?
Yes.
It's about limit?
We would need to look into that and see specifically how the event set up, and then we could advise you better on what specifically would be the limitations on that.
Could we put, could we put limitations on certain events compared to other events? Could, could we put limitations on certain events compared to other events would probably be my bigger question.
We certainly can look at certain restrictions at the city. We wanna propose by ordinance, uh, to require limitations, uh, at council's direction, certainly.
Chief, chief is coming up, so, um-
I, I saw the chief Ashton, uh, come up because it was kinda going in his field, uh, as, as- As, as Ms. Nash talked about, this is, this will be private groups. The city is not actually selling or distributing any of that alcohol there. We're not necessarily, wouldn't be in a position to determine how many drinks people would consume or the hours of time. We would have no involvement except to actually sign that permit with the officers in blue.
So, city manager, thank you for answering that. So I'm, I'm good, as long as we have no, there's no liability for us and it's on the private party thing. But I do want to make sure that, and again, in all permits, they're required to have the officers in blue program. Am I saying that right?
That is correct.
Okay, Councilman McCall, and then Councilman Javale, then Braddock.
Um, and just for clear, I guess for, I guess for my reasoning on it, because initially I was for it, which I think I still am, but I just want to still make sure I'm clear on it. So we now have, is now permitted to allow private organizations to serve alcohol at Carolina Bank and where, you said in the?
Soccer complex, as well as the Lot and Chase House and Lawn.
Chase House and Lawn, okay. So why not also, why the tennis courts and not the basketball courts and the football court, football fields? Why particularly the football, why particularly not the tennis courts? Is it the area or?
So, for example, we have, say we have a pickleball or tennis or tournament coming up, we would have adults participating in those and if the USTA is an organization that would like to have alcohol on premises for spectators and everything, they would have to have this approval first.
And if, and a follow-up on that, does other municipalities allow, I guess they have in tournaments too, do they allow for a similar type of?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So with regard to the issue of liability that Councilman Smith raised, it's my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong, that in addition to them, the, whoever's putting on that tournament, to having hired the officers in blue, they also have to provide the city with a policy of insurance?
Yep, general liability insurance.
And we are named as a?
Certificate holder.
Okay. And what is the liability limits that we're requiring?
So there's a million dollar.
Okay, we're requiring them to carry a million dollar policy of insurance?
That's correct.
Braddock?
I mean, I just have problems with this. You mentioned Carolina and the Soccer Complex. Neither one of those are in a residential area. This park's in a residential area where we have playgrounds, where it's been, you know, really for children and we got several other places where people, you know, could go drink or do whatever. I'm not, it's not the, I, I think there's too much focus on the liability, you know, which means that we, we foresee a problem. And so, uh, I ju, I just don't think that bringing, you know, alcohol into a environment, which has really primarily been for children in the past and just people looking to, you know, enjoy, enjoy a quiet part, to bring that in there. The other thing is it's not contained, like Carolina, um, the Carolina area and the Soccer Complex, that's kind of a, a contained area. Someone gets drunk or rowdy or whatnot, they can go a hundred different directions. And every direction that they go, they're going to run into someone's home. And so for me, I, I just don't think that whatever, you know, money that we would generate or whatever tournaments that we would generate, isn't worth exposing a residential area to potential problems that we're already believing that we have to have police there and we're already concerned about the liability. The, the juice isn't worth the squeeze and, and we're really changing the whole nature of that park and what it's been by, by changing that, that status.
Um, Councilman Javale?
We have the tennis courts out there by the Carolina Bank Field.
Yes, the tennis center.
The tennis center. And we hold a lot of tournaments out there as well. Is that one of the venues where it's currently allowed?
It's also, yes, at the tennis center.
Okay, so.
We have turn, yes, we have tournaments where we have that.
So as I understand it, and Councilman Braddock's point is, you know, the Soccer Complex is kind of a separate entity unto itself. Carolina Bank Field is sort of a separate entity unto itself. The Tennis Center is kind of a separate entity unto itself. But Timrod Park, on the other hand, is a mixed use, if you will, with the playground, you have the residential area. It's kind of a unique situation in that it's right in the middle of a neighborhood. And, and I, I do understand, uh, your point in that it's in the middle of a neighborhood, as opposed to kind of not in the middle. And is this something that we were asked to do by someone?
Yes, sir. Well, not specifically, no. We have, we do have a pickleball tournament and, um, it was asked, do we already have that in place? And we currently do not.
Okay, and, but they're still moving forward with the pickleball tournament?
That's correct, yes.
And so if we vote against this, we vote no, is it going to prevent these tournaments from going forward?
We will not, until, we'll, we'll know after the fact.
But is it your understanding, is it your understanding that, is it your understanding that, this won't have a impact on it?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
No, sir. I, I, I will say that it's been mentioned, like, potentially at the amphitheater, having like a wind down, in the future at the amphitheater area for like a Sunday night, have some jazz in the park and allow and wine. So those are other specific ideas that has been, um, you know, brought up, so.
Councilwoman Me Smith, and then Braddock.
Um, and, and I can understand that, um, a lot of these, especially the Tennis Association, that could be one of their ways of bringing in revenue.
That's correct.
Um, by, by having the purchase of these things. Um, and I don't think people are out there to abuse it. I do understand what you're saying, um, Councilman Braddock, but there is a bar, um, that is not too far from there. Um, and so I, I don't see any issue. I do understand that, um, it may make the day go a little bit more if they had a little beer and wine, you know, and make them enjoy it a little better. But, um, I, I don't have any issues and I definitely understand, um, I'm comfortable with us being able to have that million dollar liquor liability, um, us as a certificate holder, which means we won't be liable for anything, um, and it would definitely put all the liability on that organization. So I'm, I feel better with that.
Now, Councilman Braddock? Go ahead, Councilman Braddock.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, as you vote, just look at that as a blank and put Lucas Park, Ebenezer Park, Javale Park, or Levi Park in there, because that's exactly what you're doing is if you say yes to this, you're basically, you know, saying yes to all these other parks that are in residential areas that we certainly wouldn't want that type of activity to take place.
So my question is, what makes the other parks different? We can see that there are a lot more amenities and space. Um, Timrod Park is twenty acres?
Yes, ma'am.
How many acres is Ala Jones Park?
Not, not twenty.
Um, how, um, and so what is the difference between the, so if this does come up, because that's, that was the question. If this comes up again, why can't we do it on said park? What it would be, what could we say?
So we would have to look at the totality of it. Um, for instance, you've mentioned Lucas Park. Lucas Park would not be a space where we would have large events or tournaments or wine in.
We would assume, um, um, we, the city would be responsible for marking those areas of, of where they can consume, correct?
We can look into that.
But after they're drunk, they can go anywhere.
Well, the police will be out there.
Okay, 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 okay.
The boys and crew will be out there.
But we couldn't put barriers, we could put barriers, um, to identify which areas specifically.
I think we all have our, our belief and stance, and I think Councilman Javale?
I think with the healthy discussion that we've had and different points of view, it might be a good idea for us to defer on this, to have further conversation and, and to see if we can gain more information from, um, the city on how this all works. Because it sounds like there's a lot of details that we're really not sure about how that all works. So I'd make a motion to defer.
I got a, I got discussion on here to defer.
Um, there's a motion and a second to defer.
Can I get a discussion on deferrals before we defer? Do we have a time for the said tournament, I guess, that has brought us to our attention? Is there a timetable that we have?
Yes, the tournament is next month.
Like after council meeting next month or before council meeting next month?
I'm not sure, I have to look at, uh, the calendar.
I can vote no today or vote no next month. I'll just tell you.
Don't try to make your mind go change with no more information, you know?
Well, I think they're looking at the date because if, if that's the case.
It's before.
The, it's before?
Yes, ma'am.
So we would need to vote. So we would need to vote, so.
Then, then I'll withdraw my motion to defer.
So, so we, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposes?
Nay.
Ayes have it? Ayes have it. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Uh, did, did you all need the hands on that one? So if you signify by saying aye, could you raise your hand? Opposes?
Who got it?
Yeah, he's got it, he's got it. The ayes have it, thank you. All right. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twelve. It's a resolution to adopt the Community Development Block Grant Budget for fiscal year of twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six. This has been moved to defer. All right, now we will go to appointments, reports to council, appointments to boards and commissions. That will be in executive session. Now we'll have city managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh, recently I've had a lot of questions about the A E S C plant and particularly some of the traffic related to that area near the Wilson High School. I, I have with us, uh, Mr. Hemingway, who's been working on that project. Uh, that project is in the county, but the city has been working on that. And Mr. Hemingway is here to give us an update on that program.
Um, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. Based on what the city manager just said, here I'm gonna go through some different photos showing the construction of the new driveway along Energy Drive that would serve as the major course of egress and egress from the A E S C facility that's running parallel to the CXX rail line that'll come all the way back out to Highway three twenty-seven. Here is a photo shot of, um, the new road, access road immediately behind A E S C. And here you can see where it ties in and connects to East State Carpus Road. And on that particular photo, then we're gonna go a little bit further down. Um, this portion, portion of the road is, is not paved yet. You see the grading and coursework going on here.
Quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that previous picture, is that off of?
That's still, that's heading east toward North Williston Road.
Yeah.
So the first shot is immediately behind the facility. So now they're using this portion of the road to bring their materials in and out of the facility. So the next shot is gonna be a little bit further down beyond the paved portion of the road. And, alright, so it doesn't show the connection, uh, to the paved portion, but you're going east. So we're gonna be showing you going from the most western, western spot immediately behind the facility all the way out to three twenty-seven. This would be the next shot heading east, but this is another shot of the construction. So now we're at Williston Road. So the first shot was at East State Carpus Road. So we've now made it our way to East State Williamson Road. And this road, as the city manager sent an email earlier, we're getting ready to do a bypass as they get ready to rework this intersection on North Williston Road. So there'll be a temporary closure here to allow, and then to build a new intersection for Energy Drive and North Williamson Road to be connected together.
And so would it be a stoplight, stop sign, did we go through that here?
It'll be a, a stop sign during this first phase, but the, hopefully as the technology part over the twelve hundred plus acres, as it develops out, then as more traffic, then it's gonna be designed that this will be a lot of interchange in the future as traffic increases. But the first phase is just gonna be a stop sign. Um, and mainly hopefully the purpose is, is just for traffic coming in and out of A E S C to use the new road and then all of our local residents are use the regular existing roads and not be on the new Energy Drive for the most part, but it will be open to the general public.
Okay, but they're not, you saying they're closing that whole street just to put?
No, ma'am, this is a temporary, we got to make a connection. So DOT has certain requirements for this interchange. So in order to construct all of that, they are requiring us to close North Williamson Road for a little bit and put in a temporary road via the contract that makes that intersection, um, improvement. Depends, hopefully thirty days, but it all depends on whether, whether we get in rain events that might slow that down, because they're gonna have to excavate all the dirt and then backfill and then put crush and run before they put the final asphalt layers back in. Alright. Then the next foot, um, this is where we got a string crossing. And so you can see immediately up into the bridge, so we having to build a bridge. This is between Williamson Road and North Williston Road, where we are presently building a bridge crossing. And you can see the water body beneath that particular shot. And this is as you approach three twenty-seven, you can see to the left, you can see the back of the asphalt plant a little bit, and you can see where we already got a temporary part of the pavement of the road done. And you can see the asphalt there in this shot, and then the next shot, you'll see where the new training facility and the first course base is in place. And then they're planning on getting the final course base, um, between now and next month. Um, because the facility, the training facility is scheduled to open next month. So the game plan right now is on schedule for the training facility to be opened, um, next month, be completed.
Michael, the, the state's funding all this, right? The road?
Yes, sir. All the, the road was, um, through Commerce Department. And you can see here, this is where we connect into three twenty-seven. You got the turning lanes on both north and south direction.
So what you're saying is once this training center over, it's gonna alleviate all that traffic over there by Wilson?
Well, the training center, this, um, on this part, and then over by Wilson, if you go through, they don't have any, this is what you said. You can see where the road contract is now making the turning lanes at East State Carpus Road and Old Manhattan Highway. So they're presently, they're working now to make the interchange, um, in the turning lanes there. But the, the whole road is scheduled to be completed by December of this year. So we would still have temporary traffic between now and the end of the year before this road is completed on the current schedule.
Yeah, because I had to stop going there, it was too much traffic, it was backed up, it's crazy in the morning.
Yes, ma'am, there is a little bit of peak traffic at seven thirty when school takes scene and during the course when school gets out, but the rest of the day, there's not that much congestion, but during taking and takeout. So like I said, December thirty-first is when everything should be completed. So next year this time, we shouldn't have that level of traffic at that particular interchange with the new road being open by this time next year.
Thank you so much, Michael. Thank you, thank you. Next, we will have, um, reports from the mayor. Today, um, I don't see, uh, the representative for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Is anyone here? Well, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. April thirtieth, they are asking us to, um, do a gene day and the color is teal. So the, the city, uh, building will, um, shine the light of teal for Sexual Awareness Month. Also, uh, we did a media blitz of, uh, for, uh, the community to join with, uh, Keep Florence Beautiful. Today, uh, we went out and it was a blast this morning. We had, um, fifty-five bags of trash, four mattresses, three couches, baby cribs, tires. Um, it was a blast this morning. We started on Clement Street. Um, it was a blast this morning. We started on Clement Street. And we're, that, you almost can't see the road. So we started in opening that up. And also behind the baseball field where trees are growing out towards the road and children are jumping the ditch right into the road, we're started to clean that up for. So we are, um, well on our way. I want to thank, um, Myers Lawn Care, um, Glenn McAllister's Lawn Care and Michael Williams Lawn Care with the forty-four volunteers that showed up this morning that will continue throughout the week. But we are calling for the community to join with Keep Florence Beautiful that, uh, will be cleaning up our, 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 our beautiful city all over. Please join us in making this a successful event. Um, and I think there were some questions about what I told you. There were some questions about, we've got some calls about what are we doing for, um, uh, police profiling. Um, and so I wanted Councilman McCall to address that. Um, that was something that we did back in twenty twenty-one that's already in place. So Councilman McCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, in, in our community development meeting, we discussed that as well. Particularly with the, uh, passage of, uh, uh, the resolution for, uh, Madam, Madam Mayor's, um, five-point crime plan. I've getting a lot of, um, emails and calls pertaining to, um, making sure that while we're, everyone is, is, is in agreement that we need to make sure that, um, you know, crime is, is, is a priority in our community. Um, they also wanted to make sure that there, there's no unnecessary targeting. And, um, I guess this is a perfect time to, uh, indicate that, you know, we do have parameters in place. 'Cause I know back in twenty twenty-one, um, we passed the, uh, Public Safety Review Board, um, which passed this council unanimously. Um, which, uh, again, if, if there's any members of the community who felt as if, um, their, uh, concerns were not, um, being addressed by the, by, by the police department. They have an independent review board to, um, look into that matter. And that has been in place since twenty twenty-one. Um, part of the review is, um, excuse me, the members of that, of that committee are required to, uh, have training with the police department as well as the fire department. And we have a very well-trained, um, board, um, who, who take their job very, very seriously. It's my understanding, I think, although that, we, we do have that safeguard in place, my understanding, I don't think there has ever been a, um, a successful, we had one complaint, but none was, was sustained by that committee. So again, I want to give kudos to that committee for, uh, providing that safeguard. Um, and also just letting the public, making the public aware as well that although, um, we're all in agreement on council that we need to make crime a priority, there is safeguards, um, available. I think that wraps it up.
Thank you so much. 'Cause as you know, we are very, very serious about cleaning up our community. And we want safe communities. Um, however, with us talking about cleaning up and making it a priority, we want you to know that we've not had incidents. So when people, we, we're getting phone calls and, and emails about this. Um, we are, we have been on top of any issue. But it's still, we've got to clean up our community. And so we are going to address crime by, um, um, with, with all that we can. So that's all that I have. Um, next, we will have the Business Committee Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Business Development Committee met March twenty. And, uh, we had attendance from myself, the mayor, as well as Councilman Braddock, along with, um, Scotty Davis, Clint Moore, and Michael Hemingway. We reviewed Minnesota previous meeting and then we heard from our new. We heard from our new executive director at the airport, Brad Beatles, who got here in January and has hit the ground running and has been a blur with his, all he has been doing since then. And, uh, we received a report on that, uh, from Brad. And, uh, what I would like to do this time is to, and, and Mr. Beatles is here. I'd ask him to come up, uh, and to the microphone here, uh, and give a brief, uh, review of what you gave us, which was a very detailed review of your five-year, ten-year plan and all the things happening. But you can condense that down, uh, if you'd like for us, if you're able to do that.
I will certainly try.
But welcome to Florence and we're happy to have you.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Um, I am the new airport director. My name's Brad Beatles. Try to condense that down is a little difficult, but, um, Florence has a lot of things that other airports don't have, but the main thing we have is, uh, potential. Uh, we have a lot of land that, uh, many airports are envious of. And, um, you know, there's a, a lot of opportunity to expand that, to bring in new air service, uh, some new economic development and possible jobs and, and things like that. So, um, if you all would like to know more about that, um, I am here to personally invite you to Aviation Day. So South Carolina puts on, uh, Aviation Week every year to highlight the airport's roles and, um, the economic development and growth within the state. And so, um, Florence has not done one since pre-COVID, so we're happy to be back.
Yes.
Um, there, I'll leave flyers here that you all can, can come and get, but, um, we're having it on April twenty-eighth. And, um, we have a lot of community involvement that we're really excited about. We have a lot of the schools coming out. Um, Sheriff's Department, uh, you know, uh, Global Medical Response, who is our lifeline based in Marion for now. Um, uh, so we have a lot of things going on. There will be prizes. That usually gets people there. Um, and free food. So I know you'll come now. Um, but if you have any specific questions for me, I'm more than happy to tell you. I, uh, the main thing I want to get out is that, uh, I do apologize that the airport has not played a more significant role in, uh, Florence or the surrounding area, P D region. And, uh, I'm here to, uh, change that. Promise you that.
Thank you. It just, so we, and Amanda, if there's any way that maybe we can get this up on our website and get that out. So we'll make sure that Amanda has it. But for everybody at home, it's April the twenty-eighth from noon until seven.
Yes, sir. And what day in the week is the twenty-eighth? It is a Monday. And American Airlines will be there to talk about pilot recruiting and Advantage Academy, um, actually made all of the raffle prizes, the welding department and graphic design team. So, um, really happy to have the support of the community behind the airport, so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
What we are very excited about and what we talked about at our, um, Business Development Committee meeting is the partnership between the airport and the city that has been, uh, not formalized. It has been, uh, something that I, I think we at the city have felt like would, both would benefit greatly from it. And with your assistance, as well as Robbie Hill and, uh, Chairman Josie and myself and the mayor and other members of our committee, we have been working to try to make that relationship more formal. And so this is an important step. And so I just want to thank all of council for your support that you've given up until now and moving forward. Because there's this, uh, we are looking forward to the airport taking flight. How about that?
Noted. Uh, I, I will say, um, the communication has not been there. So to council and everyone here today, um, it's pretty easy to find me, um, especially in Florence. So if you guys honestly do have anything that you would like to discuss, I am free and open to the public at all times, as long as I'm not busy.
And I'll just. Fly flow.
Hashtag fly float.
So, uh, just so you know, 'cause this is always a question that's asked. Are we looking to add more flights with American? Are we looking to add another airline? Is that something that is being considered?
Absolutely. So, um, every question that I, most questions I get are, when do we get another airline? A lot of people didn't even understand that we didn't even have room for another airline. Uh, we had another ticket counter that was cannibalized to, you know, repair some other things that we, that we had there. So, um, that should be done right before Aviation Day. And then we can go, um, a- and, you know, try to entice another airline. I've been in contact with Delta and Breeze and going to a Jump Start Conference, an air service development conference in June. And, uh, I put my salesman hat on and tried to sell Florence to, uh, one of those, one of those airlines. And, um, uh, lots gonna happen. I could promise you that. So.
In the meantime, if anybody has any flight plans in the future, fly float.
Yes, please plan early. Um, Florence can be expensive, but there have been times that I've looked and it is a ten or twenty dollar difference from Myrtle Beach or Charlotte. Right? You just got it. If you're planning a few weeks ahead, it's probably not gonna work out for you. But we have the best staff at Florence that you can ask for. TSA, American will bend over backwards to help you get on your flight. Um, you don't have to worry about TSA. Parking's right there. Like, there's so much, uh, that Florence has to offer that no one else can offer. So please give it a shot. Plan early. Fly float.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
So that was, uh, the overwhelming majority of our, um, time that was spent dealing with that. And that's the report. The Business Development Committee, is there something else?
Yeah, Councilman Jubilee, um, I would like to, uh, to ask, you know, you being the chair, I'd like to step down from that committee. It's been a huge blessing to me, um, in terms of learning so much about the city. Um, but I, I think that, uh, with our new councilman coming on board and with his background with commerce and with, uh, economic development, that it, it would be a great onboarding opportunity for Councilman McKay.
So you're looking to resign from this committee and you're nominating Councilman McKay?
If I can. I don't know if I can.
You can make, you can, you can make a recommendation.
I make a recommendation.
You can make a recommendation. Yeah. Well, uh, that is certainly noted and, uh,
Can we deal with that?
We'll, we'll report that at the next, uh, committee meeting. Is that the appropriate, would that be appropriate time to do it at the next committee meeting?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Um, so next is the community development. And I was so, um, geared up by, about the, um, cleanup that I, that was the community development. Uh, but one thing I can say, uh, we have been doing for the mayor's report, we've been doing our fireside chat. And, um, we have, uh, on last week, uh, the city manager and myself did, um, I, first I want to say to staff, thank you, thank you, thank you. They, they are on their off-hours doing these fireside chats and it is going over very well. Uh, people are really appreciating, um, us giving them the updates and having open dialogue with them and, and a listening ear. So thank you so much because, uh, at, at several of, of them, we served food. And they went out and literally served. The people did not have to get up. We served them food. We, we catered to them. Um, so I thank you so much because you didn't have to do it. Uh, but on last week, um, well, was that this week? No, this last week, this Monday. It, last week, Scotty, um, city manager and myself went, um, and did a fireside chat with just the two of us. And it went over very, very well with our, um, realtors. And, um, hopefully we can, can do more. We want the connections to, um, we want to connect the dots so that we could all be one. So thank you, um, city manager and council for allowing us to be able to do that. Um, that, that's all from me. And now we will have finance from, um, McCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, on March twenty-fifth, we just received this information. Um, we received the, an update on the auditor for the R, R F P reward. My understanding is only one applicant, uh, which was the previous, uh, the previous auditor who, uh, who conducted our audit for the city. Um, additionally, uh, we received the, uh, financial packet for February twenty twenty-five. Um, and, uh, our interim CFO, he filled out questions regarding, uh, budget and expenditure items. Expenditure items, excuse me. And lastly, um, Councilman Smith and Councilman Braddock, uh, spoke on the, uh, CARES program and, um, and the success on it, while also making suggestions for the, uh, future use of it. And that concluded our, our, our information that we received.
Thank you so much. Counsel, if you don't mind, um, the ordinance about the U D O regarding the setbacks for communicate, um, communication towers, before we go into executive session, there is an attorney here that's here to, um, talk to us. Could we get the information before we go into, if that's okay? So if you don't mind, can we have the attorney, uh, to come up? Thank you.
Thank y'all so much. So my name's Sarah Sparul. I'm here on behalf of Duke Energy. And I have with me more important than me, 'cause y'all have plenty of legal advice. Y'all don't need to hear it from me. I have some technical support here. I have some engineers here. I have Patrick Bernier and Caleb Jorgensen, who can answer any questions you have. So the amendment we're seeking, under the current ordinance, there has to be a foot-for-foot setback between any communication tower and the next lot line. Under modern engineering, the way towers are designed now, if you put up a new tower, they don't, they would never just fall straight over. So you don't need the whole foot-for-foot setback. So what we've proposed is that the U D O be amended to reflect that reality in modern tower design. So that when an engineer has designed it, has signed off on it and says, this is the fall zone, that would be the setback from a residential lot line. And Patrick and Caleb can explain that a lot better than I can. And I would like for y'all to ask any questions you have of them of how technically that would work and why that doesn't present extra danger to nearby residential properties.
Come on up. We won't bite.
Do y'all have pictures?
They didn't bring their tower last time. We had a model tower for planning commission.
Okay, nice.
Yep, so basically it just ties into advancements in design software that we have. We're able to more accurately model these towers and then place key members and key points on the tower to control how and where it would fall in the event that it did. And granted, these events are very extreme events, right? They're not your typical weather. They're ca- uh, hurricane level, you know, category four or higher events. And then, uh, the fall zone would have to be certified by a professional engineer who designed the tower. So we're not saying that just anybody can build a tower anywhere. It still has to be engineered, certified, and then backed by that individual. So there's a lot of regions that this update has happened. We do see the older U D Os a lot of times will have requirements of a one-for-one or something similar. And this is just kind of updating to be more in line with the technology that we have available.
Councilman.
What is the purpose of wanting to have it closer to the right one? In other words, right now it's a one-for-one setback. So if you have a hundred-foot tall tower, you're gonna have to be a hundred foot back. Well, that seems to me to serve a fall zone purpose, but it also serves an aesthetic purpose of being further out. So I'm trying to understand why there's a reason to put a hundred-foot tall tower twenty feet away. Why, what's the point of having it be, of changing it? What's the value in that?
So I, I do have an answer there. The exist, so these are, Duke's specific question involves its existing substations, which already have towers under old tower design that predate the zoning code. So there are already towers out here. This is to replace them with newer, safer models. And the concern isn't the general setback lines. This is the specific foot-for-foot requirement to residential uses.
So it wouldn't, the, I'm sorry. Go ahead and finish it.
Yeah, so I, I'm still, and, and maybe now we're, we're kind of getting into the legal issue a little bit. So maybe this, I don't know, uh, if this, we need to invite them to come back into executive session. to come back into executive session to have conversation on the legal bit.
Don't know that that would be necessary for them procedurally to join, but I think if there are any other questions for clarity, it'd be fine to ask them now to address that even though.
Okay, you've got McCall, Neesmith, and then Braddock.
And I think you, I'm recognized.
Yes.
I think you partially answered. I didn't think I catch it all the way. But you said this is, we have an older UDO, and other cities and regions have already... Is there any other cities in particular we can point to that already made that change?
So, in the packet presenting to the Planning Commission, there are similar provisions to what we're arguing for here in Sumter, Darlington, Charleston, and Georgetown Counties, York County. And also, we listed there City of Surfside and City of Walterboro. So, there are numerous jurisdictions in the area that have adopted similar, consistent with modern engineering standards for communications towers.
Thank you, that answered my question.
And...
I'm sorry, so specifically for the substation we're looking at, there's an existing 300-foot tower, approximately a 300-foot tower, guide tower. So, where that is on the property, existing non-conforming use, right? Because now the code has changed since it was built. What we're trying to do is replace that tower with a new tower very adjacent to the existing tower, so that all of the communications stay in the one compound. And this has come across in other jurisdictions as well, where these existing substations have these old end-of-life towers. And so, in order to make them, in order to get the capacity and the future expansion needs that we need, we're having to replace them in those locations.
And I did want to throw in there that even with the zoning text amendment, it'll still have to go through the special exception process for any tower that's going to be built on a specific site.
Just so that we can go in order.
So, and I know exactly the tower you're referring to, and I understand the point of it. My concern isn't that tower. I don't have any issues with that. I don't have any concerns with that. My concern is, it's communication towers in general. It's changing UDO. It's somebody else wanting to come in at some point in the future and put something up that's not Duke. It's somebody else. And so, if we can't, is there a way, and I don't know the answer to this, is there a way to address your specific request without changing the UDO? And I don't know the answer to that, where it opens it up in general and where it makes it where everybody is now open season and in case any cell-owned, you know, provider wants to come put a tower up.
Sure. And so, the reason we are here in the special exception process, this lot foot-for-foot setback requirement from residential uses isn't waivable. So, we have no way to get this issue in front of the ZBA without this text amendment. The text amendment doesn't change any of the other setback requirements. It is very narrowly tailored, when you look at the attachment, to just Paragraph 6 in the communications tower provision. So, it doesn't change anything else about the setbacks, anything else about, there are numerous requirements for communications towers. All this says is, if you have a site that fits within the fall zone from a residential use, you can petition for that special exception, and the ZBA will determine if the use is appropriate.
So, this is a request for a change to allow for a special exception?
Correct. It's not waivable under the current ordinance.
Councilwoman Neesmith and then Braddock.
So, I know you mentioned Surfside, Darlington, Sumter, Charleston, all those other counties. Have they already changed their UDOs already?
So, yes, so, and we can resend this to council. We can send the application that went in front of the Planning Commission. But yes, these are provisions that have been adopted by those jurisdictions with language very similar to what we're proposing here.
Okay. And how tall are these towers going to be?
So, again, it will be subject to the application for each individual site. The specific one that brought us here, that tower is a 300-foot tower.
Okay. Now, when you say they don't fall straight over, when they do fall, how they fall?
So, the most common is to put the critical stress point or the most likely point of failure in the center of the tower, therefore making the tower fold in on itself. So, you know, it, common knowledge says something falls, it falls straight over. But given the lattice-type nature or kind of, you know, angle iron that's framed up together, you can, you put that point in the middle so that if it were to overstress, it wouldn't fail down at the very bottom and fall straight over. It would fail in the middle and kind of fold in upon itself.
And so, what would be the new fall zone or the new setback from each one?
It's 50, right? It's 50 feet?
From one to one to one?
No, it would depend, it would depend based on the individual design of each tower. And that's why it has this requirement that an engineer has to certify it, an engineer has to design it. That's why those requirements are there, because it depends case by case where that point's going to be.
And how long those towers last?
So, Duke Energy is, considers these towers 50-year assets. The one that we're replacing is about 50 years old. We're doing this across the footprint, and like Caleb can talk about, we design them at the highest risk category, which means they're utility-grade towers. We design our towers in a much higher wind speeds and ice and stuff like that than the carriers do, like the third-party American towers. Ours are better designed and stronger than their towers.
Okay. Councilman Braddock?
So, two questions. One, with this change, it would still have to go through the BZA or some other committee. And two, so what you're saying, if it's a 300-foot tower and you engineer it to collapse at 150 feet, then it would be a one-to-one on the 150 feet?
Correct. It would be, the distance would be the fall zone instead of the full height.
Gotcha.
Okay. You're good? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, we now have executive session. We will go into executive session for discussion regarding appointments to boards and commissions to discuss contractual matter regarding Urban Square, to receive updates pending lawsuit, to discuss a contractual matter regarding the purchase of property, and also now the discussion that, about the UDO and the... The design review. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second, there's all in favor? We call this meeting back into order. I'd like, we need a motion to come out of...
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second it.
All right, all in favor? Public, we, just to let you know, there was, the matters that we discussed, there was no vote taken in executive session. So, now that we, I think the first thing we want to talk about is the UDO.
The design.
No, the design, the downtown design. I'm sorry, let me see, trying to find it. It is bill number 2025-08. Go ahead.
I make a motion to defer.
Second.
Motion to defer.
Yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Let the record reflect that this is deferred. The next we have is the unified, the UDO. It is bill number 2025-14.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to withdraw my deferment. And go ahead and let's vote on it today.
Great. All right.
She's withdrawing, we don't have to second her withdrawing, right?
No, she withdraws, so we don't have to second that. So, now we'll, now we can go on and just vote?
It's my understanding that there's going to be, upon acceptance, approval of first reading here, that there's an opportunity to amend what's been presented between first reading and second reading to limit the scope of it. Is that right?
That's correct. We will limit that to utility providers, public utility providers.
Okay. With that, I think we can go ahead and pass on first reading then, is that right?
We got to vote, we got to vote.
Yeah, we got to vote.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there's a motion?
Second it.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Let the bill reflect that it has passed. Okay. Then, the next thing we have is, is that Urban Square? Oh, Boards and Commissions, Boards and Commissions.
Madam Mayor, we have some boards and commissions that have expired terms. The first one is Planning Commission, Councilman McKay. Defer. Civic Center, Councilman Neesmith Jackson.
Defer.
Design Review Board, Councilman McKay and McCall.
Defer.
Parks and Beautification, Pro Tim Jabeley.
Andrew Chaplin.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposes? The ayes have it.
Veterans Park Committee, Councilman McKay. Resilience and Sustainability Advisory Committee, Councilman McKay. That concludes staff's report.
Thank you so much. As it is indicated on the agenda and in the motion to go into executive session, a part of the executive session was devoted to a discussion of issues related to the economic development project, Project Urban Square. We were joined in executive session by the principal developer and that project, of that project, Mr. David Tuttle and his attorney. We appreciate Mr. Tuttle's and his team being with us today. Like many residents of Florence, we are excited about the prospects of Urban Square, which we hope will be major, which will be a major investment in our community. But also, like many in the public, we are frustrated that the development has not proceeded on the schedule that so was originally agreed to by the city and the developer in 2020 and 2021. We want, we want Urban Square to proceed as quickly as possible, especially in light of the significant resources the city has invested in this project. So, at this point, I just remembered we were supposed to bring, hear from Mr. Tuttle. Mr. Tuttle, you can come on up at this point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll give you guys a quick update on where we are on the project. On the multifamily phase, we're moving along. We encountered some unsuitable soils that we're having to now go back in and remediate. That process should happen here in the next several weeks. You'll see some activity related to that. Additionally to that, we're moving forward with design work on the office building. We're very excited about the prospect of a new office building in Florence. We're also, parallel to that, working with townhome builders and developing the townhome section of Urban Square as well. We're very excited about the days ahead, and thank you for the opportunity to update today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you much. So, today, citizens, Urban Square developer, development has been granted three extensions of time with regard to the benchmark originally agreed to. And although we are hesitant to grant a fourth, we are, the council and administration are constrained by what was agreed to and allowed to happen by prior council and administration. Based on those constraints, we feel that it is, in the best interest of the city and the investment we have made to grant a final extension to October 1st, 2025, for the developer of commence, construction of the multifamily portion of the project, as well as, well, as well to extend all other deadlines in the incentive agreement by six months. Urban Square will provide a monthly update to the Business Committee moving forward. Mr. Tuttle has personally represented to council that these new deadlines will be met. So, can I have a motion on the agreement of Urban Square?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. So, we were moving forward. I think that brings us to close. We've covered everything. So, do we have...
No action taken on the other two items. You can just say, on your other two items in executive session.
No action taken.
Okay. On the other two items that are listed here, there was no action taken. So, that concludes our meeting.
Adjourn.
First, all those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.